There's so many things. But that came.
You're live.
All right, uh, good afternoon. It is Monday, April seventh, uh, six, we'll say we started at sixteen, six twelve. Uh, but this is the community engagement committee meeting. Um, can I get a roll call, please, there?
Yes, I can do that. Ms. Mail?
And me, here.
Ms. Jesser?
Here.
Dr. Fisher is absent. Ms. Thomas?
You know where she is?
Absent. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Present.
Okay, uh, make a motion to excuse Dr. Fisher and Ms. Thomas.
Motion to excuse.
I'll second it.
Motion's been carried. Because they only want.
Uh, without objection, I guess it's just you, I.
I will.
You just made a motion to excuse Dr. Mina and your sister and Ms. Phyllis.
Motion's been carried.
I was trying to text.
Um, oh, she said she's trying to text her. Have you both had opportunity to review the agenda?
No, I can't get a topic, please.
Just to say.
I'm going to have to say no.
Yes, exactly. Here, I got it up here now. Okay. No? All right. So we don't have any registered speakers. Uh, we have to approve minutes. I got, uh, a report written up. And then we got re-thrive from you, um, little free pantries also from you. Just last time they emailed Friday, we talked about it. And then some of the old business stuff announcements. And anything that you guys want to amend or add, take away. You know?
Looks good.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
We are here. Have you guys reviewed the minutes? See, y'all, we, we need to have the mayor update these committees, man. We can't.
I mean, I printed it out. I, I had so many meetings that changed. They changed their dates.
Um, I do, I did review them. I don't think that there was any, no, no edits. So I will make the motion to, uh, approve the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. I need a second.
Second.
All right, all right. Uh, first thing, the chair report. So we had the bicycle and hammock giveaway, uh, on Sunday, March twenty-third. Gave away about thirty-five bikes.
Yeah.
Well, that's the same thing.
Um, so I'll note here that for the families who were not able to receive a bike from the village, they can go to MOBO. That is the Bicycle Co-op. And they register as a member with the co-op. They can adopt a bike from them, put in a little sweat equity, learn how to, uh, fix your bike, maybe get some, uh, safety literature from them. And so more info on MOBO can be at this website. And so of course, this agenda and the meetings and all that stuff, meeting minutes get uploaded if you want that. Uh, so I actually got some good news unrelated to the bike giveaway. So during our last community engagement committee meeting, if you recall, that was on March tenth. We made a motion, uh, to recommend legislation to appen, excuse me, amend appropriations for the purpose of funding the recreation commission with two thousand dollars from the general fund. All right, so we go to finance, say, like, let's give rec, not only permission to spend the money, let's actually give them money. Uh, so give them two thousand dollars from the general fund. This was, uh, the mail out postcards to every resident household to advertise Juneteenth, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and the community calendar. So what, uh, finance committee instead, they had said, have given us amended appropriations, um, and transfer them from the general fund as we recommended. Instead, they approved our request for spending up to two thousand dollars directly from an ARPA fund. So, uh, that means we can actually spend this money without approval from rec. I mean, it's still for the some, for the purpose of these advertisements and the postcards, but before we were known to go to rec, hope they make quorum, and hope they all vote yes, and all of that. So this actually worked to our advantage. These are exactly what the ARPA funds for, they didn't have to touch the general fund. So that's good news. Um, related, unrelated, come to find out that ARPA fund has a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in it. That is not specifically approved for anything. Quote, I'm not wrong yet, am I? I got all of, okay. Uh.
It's, it, it is a hundred percent appropriated.
A hundred percent appropriated.
But there are, there are more options what that can be used for.
Okay.
Including what you just were talking about.
So, uh, so during our last meeting, I suggested that we start requesting funds from the general fund. Um, and that's just request, and I mean, finance will give it to us, but instead I think we should start, um, using ARPA fund money instead. So again, to distribute flyers, which is already taken care of, but when we start talking about, uh, updating the village website, or some of this audio visual technology, as long as that falls within like the ARPA bounds, um, it is my opinion that finance was actually very eager to spend that money and support this village events. So, um, you're kind of like, eh, we don't want to touch the general fund, but ARPA, because it's just sitting there for these purposes, they're like half at it. Um, so I feel like it was one other thing, but I guess not. So We Thrive, Ms. Quinn, you got any updates for us?
Only the update I have is we finished the, uh, because I was flying last Thursday. And tomorrow, we'll start cookie plans.
Nice.
From, uh, six to seven thirty, every Tuesday.
Okay.
I don't have anything on the little pantry box yet.
That's okay, because y'all, and actually gonna be tomorrow, right? Y'all know me.
No, because it, eh, moved.
Again? I thought it was supposed to be Wednesday, and it got moved to a Tuesday.
And couldn't make it, so we had to move it to the.
Another day? Okay.
I think the fifteenth.
And that's a week from two, okay, a week from tomorrow. Okay, I knew it was a Tuesday, maybe not this Tuesday.
It's on Tuesday.
Okay, and so regarding the little free pantries, we might, we may or may not get an update, but basically during the last We Thrive meeting, um, we got, I'm trying to share it up here. And it's just, just, this is work stuff. I don't need that up here. Um, so the little free pantries. So we're familiar with the little, the library, you know, I'm happy to have the little blessed area. Looks like a, kind of like a bigger mailbox that kids can drop, need a book, take a book.
Right.
Where they got something similar, a little bit bigger, but for food. Um, because there's one across the street from Pleasant Ridge Montessori, right at that church. So we are considering trying to get one in Golf Manor. So you might, we're going to email about that. And so this is legislation that was taken from, what she, did she say Louisiana, maybe?
Did she say that? Yes.
Okay, that sounds familiar. So, uh, basically a representative from We Thrive has provided us with an ordinance that was, uh, passed in a different state, essentially. And if that's something we would want to do, we can review this. I've added it in there. Um, would I imagine being the biggest hangup, so this was already, uh, highlighted, uh, for We Thrive, but this blue, um, is basically you gotta require signage using the Healthy Eating and Research Guidelines. So I think that is what will protect us if we decide to do that, you know, protect us as in what happens if somebody has expired food, essentially. Um, because I would imagine that would be council's biggest concern. Um, so I'd like you guys to review this. We don't have to talk about it in the detail of this meeting, but either next meeting or the following meeting, we should have an idea if this is something we actually want to do. And, uh, make a recommendation to council. Council ultimately votes on it, but we have to have support from a committee to say at least that we reviewed it and we support it. And if we haven't reviewed it or supported, there's no point in bringing it to council. You got any thoughts? And I actually happened to go to Tiffany's hair salon. I'm just passing out some Juneteenth flyers. And I was like, how would you feel about a pantry being right here? And she said she didn't know.
Yeah, I'll talk to her tomorrow, because it's my time of the church tomorrow.
Okay, ask her again, make sure she don't care. But that's one of the places we proposed to put it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right, you know, right where you come into the village between, uh, what is that, Pleasant Ridge, right where that band all the sand was.
Oh.
There's that hair salon right there, so.
Yep, 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 the back way.
Yep, and then another, uh, option was actually near the, uh, schools, near the gateway coming to Emily Village on Elbra.
Mm-hmm.
Where basically where the Juneteenth, basically it would be essentially where we put the banners.
Where the banners go.
Yeah, so that would be another option to put one there. So, um, but yeah, if you got support coming out of a committee and, um, so if somebody would have to build it, it's not like it would cost a lot of money. Um, but have somebody build one, and then we gotta make sure those guidelines are on there. And then maybe somebody check in once a week, once a month, I guess, to make sure if food is not like expired or anything like that. Maybe most of this latest legislation is how big they should be, essentially.
So we have to get somebody to build it, or we have to go through council first to see if it's okay.
Either or, I guess. I mean, they won't stop, doesn't matter, we won't get them to start building it until we get approval. But I mean, we can get approval to find out if anybody's actually interested in building it, or we can find somebody who's interested in building it. So in the event that council supports it, we can get started right away. I don't know if that part really matters. This is your wheelhouse. You have an opinion?
Um, no, I think it's a great idea though. Um, is this the only, I don't even think it has food insecurity issues, or is this the only?
Thing that we're talking about. Uh, so this, and then every once in a while, we try to get the five-one-three relief bus out here. Uh, oh, it was something else that we, it was two different things we were talking about simultaneously. The, the food, the bus, and I can't remember what it was. Dr. Bennett might vaguely remember. Because I, I remember we ended up having to put a pause on it because they were looking, whoever the organization was, it might have just been a free store, food bank, looking specifically for five-oh-one-three-C, not, like, we're a nonprofit as a village, but how to organize with the government specifically, as opposed to like a church or another nonprofit, and then they were like, uh, let me get back to you. And I think everything got put on hold. But I, I wonder if that was a free store, food bank, or? I can't remember. But it was like two or three smaller tasks, and they, to me, they all kind of ran together. They weren't really, I didn't take the lead on any of that stuff, so I kind of. But the five-oh-one, but then the five-oh-three, five-one-three bus tended comes like midday.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah.
A lot of people are still at work to, to work into.
Um, so, yes and no. This is the one that can be probably done the quickest, um, so. But you are more than welcome to propose new ideas and all of that stuff, if you have other potential solutions. That's the whole point of kind of community engagement, too. Okay. It's like we could come up with stuff and, you know, somebody's like, that's actually not a good idea. Like, we want to hear that, too. And like propose alternatives and stuff like that, so, um. But this would also just kind of be like a pilot, too, to see how well it actually, like, is this something anybody would even use? Might end up being too much of a liability, but I, I think that, that one in Pleasant Ridge, I think food's always coming in and out of there. And it doesn't have to be just food, it could be supplies.
Yeah.
Like toiletries and all of that stuff. Exactly.
Hygiene products in the household, yeah.
I mean, that could also be an option, too. We're focused on food, but that's, that's a need, too. So if we are worried about somebody getting sick, then it's like, well, no food allowed, and we just only make it like personal hygiene type products or something, too. Um, that's actually probably a, a really good idea. So, um, is there anything else, anybody that want to, or should we go into the next agenda?
Question.
Yeah.
Do we have any local churches in Golf Manor that's willing to donate? Well, Golf Manor, Pleasant Ridge, Bon Hill, Rose Line?
Just got to reach out to them.
I mean, because I know like, uh, what's the big, New Prospect? You know, Pastor Lynch, he's always willing to, uh, lend a hand. Uh, so I know that's one that's right there in Rose Line. Well, I mean, just like for the toiletries and stuff, you can ask the church to, you know, donate it, you know, ask the congregation to do that. I know my church is in Bon Hill, they're doing theirs April, I think, sixteenth or nineteenth, so. We have some churches I think that would be happy to more to donate.
Right, and we, being a nonprofit ourselves, we can reach directly out to like Target or somebody, too. It doesn't even have to be a nonprofit through us. Anybody who has those, Kroger, whomever, we can probably get, just send out a letter and our tax number.
Target has a, a program where you can, um, apply for, it, it, they can give you a, like a five hundred dollar gift card, like, say, like.
Nice.
Give whatever, but it's for nonprofits or for not, like, like this.
Okay, so would they do it for government? It don't have to be a five, because if we're nonprofit, just not five-oh-one?
I don't think they have to be, um, I mean, I, I, I think, I don't think it matters.
Okay, to be any nonprofit, as long as we got that tax, yep, that makes sense. That'd be cool. All right.
It would, pro, I'm, I'm assuming, and again, I, I preface this with, I'm not a, I'm not a tax advice giver, but I would assume this is no different from like when somebody donates to Juneteenth, or donates to something else, it could be a tax deductible donation.
Right.
It's just not five-oh-one-C-three.
Correct.
Tax deductible.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, I've learned, I was learning some of the distinctions with Victoria's thing. So, uh, all right, I guess we can move on if there's nothing much to talk of. Oh, sorry, it's going to be, it's like, why, there's so many words on here. Okay. Um, so that was little free pantry. So, shh, 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 so Dr. Mina's not here to talk about this much. Uh, the postcards. Uh, I have started designing some postcards, I guess, um.
Who's going to print them?
Minute Man and Ken Wood, I think, will likely print them. And.
We ain't going to go to Roach Show?
We can get close to Roach Show.
I'd be happy.
Okay.
Send me out information. I'll send it right on over.
Yeah, so you have your own cross paths, any?
No, Iris is a sister, I'm sorry.
I work for Ollie and something, and she's going to work for.
Yeah, yep, yep, so yeah, Ms. Ro.
Okay, so yeah, we can go there. Uh, and so what we've decided is every door direct mail, is that what it's called?
Um, that, that was one of the options. The issue that, um, that Mr. Hirth had brought out was that that's, wait, I'm sorry, you said direct mail, meaning actually going through the post office, paying for individual postage? Or are you talking about the, like, route mail where you give it to the mail carrier?
The latter.
Right, so Mr. Hirth had mentioned that the issue that can come with that is that it's up to the mail carrier to actually put them out, and we just, you, you have to get cleared from the post office, but their deadline is, make sure that there's enough time.
Right.
For that to actually circulate.
Right.
But, yeah, I think we said that's the more cost-effective, uh, program. It's just the flyer's a little more expensive. But it'll still be under that two thousand, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so basically this option is, as a, when you, uh, like you don't actually provide them the exact addresses, you know how sometimes you get something in mail that just says like resident? Or something like that? Uh, so we, that's an option, as opposed to getting all the addresses in Golf Manor doing that.
And it'd be a cheaper, a cost-effective.
Yeah, mostly. Uh, and so you can go online and like pick out the routes you want, we just picked out, like, there might be like five or six routes in Golf Manor or something like that. But what he's breaking up is that when those get delivered, is that the discretion of the mail carrier? Like, if he has a heavy load that day, he's probably not going to want to take a thousand postcards. But if it's like a light load that day, he's like, okay, I'll go ahead and get rid of them and all of that, so, um.
But the advantage is that you get much more spread as well, because you'll, you'll, you know, you're going to hit neighborhoods that are around Golf Manor that are on the same mail routes.
Correct, yeah.
So they'll know about Jun, Juneteenth, they'll know about Fourth of July, they'll know about more of these community events, um, better for the vendor events, obviously, but.
Um, and so, but the good news is now we don't have to go through rec. Like, if I had to pass the postcard done today, we could probably get these printed and sent out like this week. They're not quite done, no, but I still have to get some, talk to rec about it, too. Um, but let me see. I hate how my screen is shared online now. Oops. Restore pages, we'll just go to Canva. So we'll see what we got up here so far. So you guys have seen the Juneteenth one design. So we gotta just ask rec, like, what they actually want on here. So this could be like the front of it, this is what they said to me. So just say, hey, I was being funny, just filling up space. But here it just says that the four events that, uh, rec has established, or excuse me, or organized, and so it's a big deal, rec has a commission, like, that's news, I guess. Because rec just got established maybe August or something of last year, but these would be the four events, but then also fill up space, these are when the village has their meetings, and these are the dates here, but I was going to put like a QR code for the village calendar. And then on the back is where you get the actual events, and so.
Oh.
Um, that's kind of the Juneteenth one I'm working on. Like, this is definitely not anywhere near done. I don't even know if rec wants to approve prior, which is why I say, um, I have to wait and talk to them. But Juneteenth is mostly done. Some stuff actually came up today regarding Fourth of July. Um, so, yeah, rec's meeting is a week from today, so I might be able to get these a couple of questions answered. And see what they actually want on this, um, newsletter, or excuse me, postcard.
You need to put on there the, uh, when they have the, uh, what is it, the weekend, uh, what do you think they call it? May or something for June first. I can't remember.
Oh, the, uh.
Yes, that.
The, the yard sale.
Yes.
I could put that on there.
Okay.
Um, we gotta get it out, so, no, we have to get, get this out. I completely forgot about the community yard sale.
We need to put it on there, but, uh.
Who's leading that, do you know? It just popped up, I need to.
No, I, no, it just popped up like you said. I don't know who, so.
Maybe Ron's kind of.
I think Ron could be over there.
Okay, I know we discussed it, but I didn't know, it's nothing really to lead, I don't guess.
No, because everybody's in their own yard.
I forgot about the community yard sale.
We don't have to have a community or anything.
Correct. So the community yard sale is essentially the time when you, everybody's permit's are waived. So everybody just goes out there the same weekend and do it at the same time. They may or may not do the tire, you know, if they're going to do the tire or the dumpster.
Uh, I have not heard anything about that this year.
So that would be worth putting, putting that out there, best of case. But anyway, yeah, this is, hopefully the next week or two, we can have some of this out. Um, so I think that's the update for that. Let's see. Uh, Juneteenth, let's see, where are we now? Um, we had maybe seven vendors registered? I, I'm one of them, though. I just wanted to see, like, everything works, so.
What, what are you?
I have on here five, one, two, three, four, five, including you. So it could be I'm missing something.
Why do I have seven?
If you give me a second, I can look that up.
Um, so did I mention in here that we have Square now set up, too? You weren't at the last deal.
No, but that's amazing.
So, yeah, that was kind of a big deal. So, uh, we now have a Square, like, we can go online, like, you can buy stuff through Square. Yeah, sorry. Um, and like this, they kind of presented itself with the luminaria events, right? So we can accept online payments through this, it's like Knox or something like that, but it's literally just a super basic form where you put in like your name, your address, and your credit card number, but there was really no indication, how much you, like, you had to manually put in how much you were, like, ten bucks or something like that. But there was no indication of what your ten dollars was for, essentially. And we had to just like, well, we only sell luminarias now, so we're going to assume that somebody wants to buy ten luminarias, because we're selling them at a dollar luminaria.
Right.
But it was just like not really tied to anything. For all we know, it could be like a donation. Well, now with Square, in this case, we set it up for Juneteenth, so specifically there is a button that says, I want to register as a vendor. Hit the button, twenty-five dollars, they charge twenty-five dollars. So now you go to Square, it says, hey, we have this vendor, we have this vendor, this vendor. I mean, you still have to go fill out a Google form, so I can know, like, who the vendors are, and get their business information, and so it's not that seamless. Um, and have an idea what they're selling. So if I gotta prepare like a food vendor or something like that, but then they pay through Square. But you can also donate through Square independently. When it comes to luminaria, we'll have, buy a luminaria, how many do you want? And that'll calculate. But also, at the event itself, like, when we sell T-shirts, or sell beer tickets, or raffle tickets, or whatever, like, all of that will be available for us in Square, and we know who bought what.
So you were correct, there were seven. I just didn't put the April ones in there.
Got you. Okay, no, we're good.
I was finishing up.
Good.
That's my.
That's nice. So basically twenty-five dollars times seven, plus a ten dollar donation that I made, and then minus any fees. So that's how much money Juneteenth's got, is some, maybe a hundred and fifty bucks or something. I don't remember what the math is. Um, and usually the goal wasn't like a thousand.
Right.
I don't know. So, um, and I'll talk to rec. So far, we have like no interpayment or anything, we just haven't scheduled any programming or anything, like, there'll be music.
Oh, good.
But, um, as far as like, programming, usually that's what the money goes to.
Yeah.
Charge the vendors and then do something for the crowd, and that's how, like, the event works. Um, so, yeah, I think that's all we really, so more stuff will be discussed in rec, um, regarding Juneteenth. And the website stuff, I don't have it, uh, the capacity for quite yet. Probably after Juneteenth is when I'll really start, um, this. But what we should do is, I already probably have one or two people, one of them's being voluntold, she doesn't know it yet, but we should probably set up a group of maybe six residents
Mm-hmm.
um, to start going over the website and see like what they don't like, what they do like, but also find other municipalities' websites and write down what they do like and what they don't like about those. So like the little mini focus group that we'll have, like a subcommittee is what I'll call it, and we'll set up some regular meetings. Um, and then when we kind of decide what we're looking for, put out a call for proposals, and try to get, um, somebody to do our website. Um, and figure out how much it costs, and that's something we're going to have to stick our hand out for finance and ARPA. They may or may not like that idea, um, like doing the website, because we have a website. It's just like, well, we'll just see, we'll see. But there are some, um, like, I would just say as a, own community engagement, that's just, I don't want to say one of the biggest complaints, but it is like, this is hard to find, and they can't go in there. Now, the community calendar actually looks really good. It works, it's updated now, so the community calendar is good. Um, and speaking of, I think they're about to ditch the app.
Which app?
Uh, the Golf Manor app. So, let me not, I'm being premature, we requested more information to help inform our decision, but we were likely to, because basically they asked for more money for the app, and it's like, it's already underutilized, and there's no way we're paying you more money for this. And so we got to figure out what that money, why they asked for the more money? And when are you going to ask for more? Like, how often? Because I guess, whenever the app was approved, that was before my time, they shouldn't have, they thought that that was it. Or they shouldn't have been asking for like another five years, and maybe it's been three years, I don't know. So, uh, there is a request for more money for the app. And also with Square, it's something they would charge us to do, but it's also good, you know, I would, I always argue instead of having an app, like, the best part of the app is like those push notifications, right? It's all weathered now, unfortunately, but whenever we have an event, like, you got the app, you know, you get that. Well, Square has the same, basically, text marketing, essentially. So, yeah, David Fisher mentioned it, which makes sense. Like, so if you have all your customers, you could just sit there and send out a, a blast, a text message.
People use Square in other agent, other places, so it's like they know your location and just blast you, is that?
Well, no, you, they would have to opt in, I'm sure. You would have to somehow get those people's phone numbers.
Okay.
But.
Once you have it.
Once you have their phone numbers, you can use Square as opposed to something else to get, but it's basically get notifications, so, um. Yeah, I mean, but that's part of it. Now, if you were to go on there, just like if you, whether or not you donate or register as a vendor or whatever, we put up there, buy T-shirts, um, there is like, you know, sign up for, you know, marketing, essentially, you can word it, like, give us your email address, or stay engaged, or, so we can just ask people to just, I mean, that's something we could put on a postcard, too, like, go find our Square account and give us your email address or your phone number, and we'll start sending you text messages and updating you that way, too. So those are all different things.
I definitely recommend getting, at least putting that out there, see how much response we get. You get a hundred fifty, two hundred names.
Yeah.
If you get ten names, then, then don't spend the money.
I mean, yeah, yeah, that's fair, that's actually good. So do it that way. There's a bunch of things we could put on. I, I know some people were here saying like, people could do better by cleaning up their dogs, or I stayed all this litter, so it's like, you know, friendly reminders, like, take your trash can, you know, up and like, don't block it, park the driveway, sidewalk, like, little, like, friendly reminders that people just, we can also add those on there.
That's a very cool idea.
Pick up your trash, pick up after your pet. There's a handful of them that I've overheard people saying. Um, so I think that's really, I did a lot of talking, but wasn't much updates. Unless anybody else has something to add or ask? No? No? Okay. Uh, you have anything to add or ask? Nope, it ended up being, I guess it was a short meeting. I was like, I feel like I got a lot to say, but maybe not.
September's barbecue.
Yeah.
What's the big, I mean, what's the, the details on that?
Uh, Reed doesn't have them, but yeah, we just picked a date.
Oh, so the, the police department is doing it?
Mostly.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah, I mean, like, it's, they're all considered quote-unquote rec events.
Right.
Um, so like they're the, but then whoever they kind of delegate to throw, like, in this case, I, I usually do Juneteenth, Ju, do Juneteenth. Uh, I think Danny is probably going to be doing Fourth of July.
Yeah, I heard that.
Yeah, so I think Danny's doing Fourth of July. So any updates we're going on Fourth of July, you might want to go to him, but he should be updating rec, just like I should be updating rec. Um, and then Reed probably do, um, the cookout. There may or may not be drones. He's going to try to get some fireworks through drones, and I was like, do drones for sure. So I shouldn't advertise that to not disappoint anybody, but.
Fireworks.
We're trying to, you rather have fireworks or drones?
Yes.
What?
I want to see things go in the air and pop off.
I don't want to hear that. What about the drone?
I like, I read one thing.
Yeah. See, I don't want the noise thing.
Okay.
She's a tiebreaker. Would you rather have drones or fireworks?
Oh, I don't know, because I just had the drone, so, um.
Thank you.
Um, what was that? What the, what did you say, I'm being bleak?
Yeah, I love it.
And I thought it looked so cool, and I'm. And I thought it was so cool, and it wasn't normally something that I got into, so I just think the drone would be a nice edgy.
There.
See?
Sorry.
Well, she, she owed, she owed like me then, apparently, uh. So, but we had, we did a drone show, and that was for C, maybe seven, seven-six.
Seventy-five, I believe.
Was it five or six?
It was nice.
Yeah, I thought it was nice.
Old people, yes, old people appreciate that, and so do animals.
Yeah, because one thing, one thing, fireworks for C, seven, five, because they shot them off with scots from concrete.
Interesting.
And then-
I don't remember, because I remember seeing fireworks from my, I, I wasn't there for the fireworks.
Yeah.
And I did not see the drone show, it was too late.
Oh, the drone, but you could hear them, they were so close.
Oh, really?
I think they did, that was from Roseline Park, because I'm sitting there, and you can hear, yeah, and Blink, you can't hear them.
No.
It's like so weird, like, it's like eerily quiet, like, you're just sitting there watching. It's like a disaster movie, like, something about to happen, there's just so many quiet, and we're just watching what's happening. Um, like, it's, it is like, literally like silent fireworks, so it was just like an element that's just like, okay, that's a little unusual. You have a preference, T, you'd rather have fireworks or drones?
I, I have no preference, I'll talk offline about the drone course, I was at-
Yeah, yeah, okay. So with that said, let's go ahead, and so announcements, our next community engagement meeting will be Monday, May twelfth at six PM. Uh, so Juneteenth is a vendor event, that's Friday the thirteenth for fourth of nine. Uh, Fourth of July will have a parade and picnic, it is kosher. Uh, and it'll be Sunday, June twenty-ninth, that seems weird, I was pushing it for June, I say pushing it, not as in I was advertising, not necessarily advocating, for June, for July sixth, I was wrong, it's June twenty-ninth. And the Labor Day cookout is Monday, September one, um, we don't have, again, much details for that, but I will start plugging some of these, uh, flyers out, and the news I got today, there may or may not, we're working on the liquor license for Fourth of July, it might end up being BYOB essentially.
They need to put the flyer thing on there too, verification, golf manor, on that, when you send the postcard out.
Okay, what, what is that?
It started this month.
Oh, the, the yard of the month, okay, yeah, yeah, right, so that's why I need to talk to rec about this. And that, actually, with that said, instead of putting like, trying to be all creative, we come up with a bunch of different flyers that, for details, we don't have, just the ones that we actually do know, just put the bullets for the other stuff that's coming later on, because it sound like a lot, like, uh, so the, so, yeah, I can say here, we got the yard of the month club.
I doubt if anybody gets it this month.
Well, I mean, I should say it in the announcement, we can add it in here, so the yard of the month club, um, so details probably on rec's page. And again, the, uh, what did you say this week, first weekend, and?
Yard sale.
The yard sale, the community yard sale.
Thirty-first, uh, June the first.
Okay.
Yeah, May the better of the June first.
Alright, so if we can get these flyers out, that soon, we could put all that stuff on here too. Nice. Alright, so, motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion carried, I'm, sorry, I second.
Second, alright, I, whoever, doesn't matter.
I.
Alright, so, motion carried, without, without objection, all you men was, that's, he, he was, uh, presiding the meeting a couple of times, he's clearly developed a habit now.
I tried.
Yeah, alright, I guess that's it.
We're not live?
I think we've been, yeah.
I'm gonna send you all some minutes real soon.
Alright, yeah, we done recording?
I was mad.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm really gonna forget.
Because I want to hear, I want to hear about this drone score.
You should, it's very fun, it's very fun.